June 20th meeting of the Board of Ed-- Board of County Commissioners together. If you will join me for the invocation. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here tonight to do people's business. We thank you for the opportunity to speak with the Board of Education and also the South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. We pray that you will guide us in our decisions that must be made for the future of this county and our young people and our education system. And please be with everybody as they go home tonight. Keep us all safe and pray that you be with the folks of Union County. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, the God of our life, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Okay. That brings us to employee recognition. And for five years of service Kathy Farley in Growth Management. For five years of service Mary Marlowe in Human Services, 10 years. Michelle, I'm sorry, Michelle Long, I'll pass you up. Michelle Long with five years in Public Works. Mary Marlowe in Human Services, 10 years. Gregory Morgan, Public Works, 10 years. Joshua Seacrest, Sheriff's Office, 10 years. Tina Sharon, Human Services, 20 years. Ann Edwards with Junior Retirement for Social Services, six years. Richard McMillan in Public Works, one year and 10 months. Thank you all for your service and we hope that you will continue on with us. Informal comments. Tonight we have two people signed up on informal comments. We have Todd Smith.
Good evening. My name is Todd Smith. I live at 5051 Scali Bart Court in Stallings. I pay taxes which operate Union County DSS. I'm almost sure my taxes pay the fees of DSS Attorney Miss Delann Piler. I'm not a lawyer. I do not know what it would take or the taxpayer cost, but I would like to request that Miss Delann Piler and Miss Wanda Sue Larson be brought before a grand jury. I don't know what it would take. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ray Cursey. Ray, I'm sorry if I--
My name is Ray Kirby. I've lived in Union County for 26 years. Paramedic, 16 years. Been in 911, neighboring county for 14 years. I watched the June 6th meeting and I was a little concerned about a couple of things that were said. With three minutes, I can only address just a little bit. Sheriff Kathy had said that no one in the communications center here has any experience in police fire or medical. I don't know, but one person there, so I don't have anything in this. Besides, I know that one person does teach medical and fire and is outstanding. The director of the 911 Center is a former police chief. So I don't know how accurate that statement was. It also concerned me, to me, I didn't feel that sheriff understood how protocol works, the card set he referred to. When you call 911 and you have a life-threatening emergency, do you expect the person over there on the phone to give you instructions? I think we all do. That's an expectation these days. And it's done by the protocols. They ask questions. Yes, some people don't like the questions. But how can you possibly give instructions on how to help somebody if you don't ask questions to get the picture drawn on what's wrong? And that concerned me. The example, child fell off a tree, broke their arm. Okay? All you need to do is send help. Does that truck go lights and sirens or do they go non-emergent at that call? Who makes that decision and how? You didn't ask how far they fell. You didn't ask if they're bleeding. You didn't ask if they're awake. Nothing. They broke their arm, let's send help. What if one of your family members is up the street having a heart attack, stroke, something's really wrong? You didn't ask any questions on this one, you're not going to ask any questions on that one, so you just send help to whoever gets it first come, first served. I don't think that's the way we want it. We did that in the 80s. I started UMC Rescue in 85, 86, back when it was rescue squad. We answered the phone at the station. Everything was lights and sirens. We came a long way. It's 2016. And I don't know what the plans are, but I would like to think that we make good decisions. Don't go backwards. When I first heard the situation, I did a little bit of research and first thing, if there's mistakes being made, that 350,000 calls, I think is the number I got, if you can point out three mistakes, that's great. Everybody makes mistakes. But first thing I thought about was staffing, because I work in a 911 center. It's a hard job. It's harder than working in the field as a paramedic or a fireman. I've done both. It's a very difficult job. And 350,000 calls, in my understanding roughly 32 people are in that comm center to handle all those calls. And that's just calls for service. That's not including all the radio traffic that has to be handled and all those things. So you guys have my number. I would be happy on my own time to help answer any questions. I teach those protocols. I know them. I know how they work. I know the purpose of them. And I'll be available for anybody who has any questions anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Don't have anybody else signed up? So now we'll go to additions, deletions, and our adoption of the agenda. And I know Ms. Boyd with the chair of the Union County Public Schools, School Board is here. And we have her on the agenda somewhere. We need to probably adjust that.
She's item 26. I think she may be the last item.
Oh, wow. Leslie, you want to stay with us all night? We're going to move you up. Is that okay with everybody? Let's move her up to, we're going to new or old business.
We can, if you would like, we could put her as the first item under old business.
22A. So 22A will be Leslie Boyd with all the school items. And how many school items or just one?
Well, you have three roofing requests in which they need to move some money in concert with the bids that they received. And then our staff had added on a adoption of a capital CPO for some minor cleanups with some prior roofing projects that have been approved. And it's like $65, et cetera, but in order for us to clean up the books before the end of the year. And so you can either take that at the same point in time or you can put that elsewhere on the agenda.
Yes, let's take it all at one time. Okay. Any other additions to the agenda or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Motion been made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, consent agenda?
Motion to approve, consent.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. That takes us to old business. Item number, well?
22A.
22A. We've got 22A. So Leslie, hey, look here. How's that for fast serve?
Better than last time.
I did provide quite a bit of information to the board in this particular agenda item that we had received from the Board of Education on funding flexibility for three roofing projects. It is a total transfer of $412, $412, $265 from East Elementary to Walter Bickett Education Center, Sandy Ridge Elementary, and Antioch Elementary Roofing Projects, which would leave a balance of $1 in the East Elementary Roofing Project. To fund the balance of the overage for Antioch Elementary, the request is $15,576 from Piedmont High, leaving a balance of $128,684, $20,527 from CADA, leaving a balance of $63,190, and $878 from New Salem, leaving a balance of $135,812. In the material that was provided to us from the schools, they did provide the bid sheets which were included in your package, as well as one of the additional requests we made this time was when they added alternates, as to whether those alternates were included within the original pricing and what, why they were requesting the alternates be funded as well. And I provided that in your agenda backup as well.
Do you like to add anything or?
No, I think that it's all as written as Ms. Coto said. You know, Walter Bickett, when we went in, we saw that there was some gymnasium roof deterioration and to get the most bang for our buck and not have to touch it twice and to take care of it made the most sense. Sandy Ridge and Antioch are those TPO roofs which we've discussed before. And actually, when the consultant went on the roof to make the measurements, photos, and notes with the bid documents, that's when he noticed the stack vent and the curbs on there for both Antioch and Sandy Ridge. And what we found is we got a $30,000, $30,000 to $40,000 savings by waiting until September to get these done. Staff has assured me that we can wait until September. I can attest in Sandy Ridge where my kids go to school, I see no buckets. And so to be able to save $30,000 for each, to get over the summer rush, was a good thing that we could do to try to save. That's pretty much all I have to add.
Okay. You have a motion?
Motion to amend the 2016 cap of budget for schools by transferring the following as outlined by the county manager.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much for coming.
Then we would also ask you to amend the capital budget for schools by adopting CPO number 181.
Where is that at on the agenda?
That was the one we sent out probably late this afternoon. I apologize.
Motion to approve adoption of CPO number 181 for UCPS roofing projects.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. And thank you to your staff and those that came with you today. It was a very good discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have old business, item number 23, Fire and Rescue Services Agreement.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. When we sent out this agenda item to you all last week, as we identified within the agenda item, we were still going through ongoing negotiations with the fire chiefs as it related to a number of issues. We sent out an attachment and hopefully there is a copy. Okay. We sent out an attachment about 1:00 or so today which identified approximately 18 issues that had been outstanding when we sent out the original fire agreement. As of Friday, we believe we had reached, we have reached agreement on all but four. In speaking to Don Gaddy, Michelle Lancaster, the assistant manager, spoke to Don Gaddy today. He has spoke to some of the fire chiefs. We believe we have reached agreement on those remaining four items. However, they cannot give us definitive approval until they go to their Board of Directors, which is occurring this Thursday. But based upon what Fire Chief Gaddy has told us, we believe that those four items have also been resolved based upon county staff's position that is included in the attachment. The request that we are making of you this evening is to authorize a county manager to approve the fire and rescue services agreement with the fire departments. If in fact, that after Thursday's meeting, if there are issues unresolved, we can certainly bring them back to you. You all could establish a special meeting and bring them back to you prior to June 30th. The reason June 30th is such an important date is that with the, I believe it's the five tax districts, Jeff, those agreements will renew automatically and you will not have an opportunity to amend those agreements until next year. It is different with the fee districts, but with the tax districts, if we do not terminate and enter into a new agreement as put forth before you this evening, then those will automatically renew. And those agreements, as you are well aware, are 20 to 25 years old.
Is anybody here representing the fire chiefs or the council? Anybody here? Don, oh, Don, I see you back there. I was looking for you, Don.
And I think he's hiding in the very back.
Don, can you come up for just a second? So the boards are going to be meeting Thursday night, you think?
The chiefs and at least a member, hopefully the president of each board is supposed to be there Thursday night.
Okay.
They're going to try to resolve the issues that we have then.
Do you think Friday morning, by around 8:00, we could have some kind of answer from?
Can't answer that. I've got 17 chiefs that you've got to deal with.
Okay.
And I can't answer for only one of them and I'm standing here.
I got you. But Thursday night is when the meeting is, right? Okay. So Friday morning, there may be a need--
We can have a consensus of what we think's going to happen.
Okay.
Hopefully this meeting will settle everything. That's what we're hoping for. That's what we're shooting for.
Well, Friday morning, that's what we're looking to do, probably settle everything.
Ms. Lancaster will know.
Okay. All right. Thanks, John. Okay. We have an opportunity, I think, Friday morning to meet, to call a special meeting.
Well, I would, well, I would make a suggestion to you. But obviously, this is completely at the board's discretion, is if you approve the agreement this evening with the manager to approve, if there are minor issues that do not change the substance of the agreement, hopefully that would be acceptable to the board. If we were to come back to you after the meeting on Thursday and say, we believe we need to have a special meeting because there are one issue, two issues, since we only have four really outstanding issues at this point in time, then you could call a special meeting. But I know Ms. Lancaster has had a number of discussions on this issue and it is my belief that I believe we can come to an agreement that will be acceptable to the county and the board and acceptable to the chiefs.
Anybody want to make that motion? I'll make it. Make a motion to authorize the county manager to approve Fire and Rescue Services Agreement with the fire departments. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any discussion? I apologize for that. I should have asked for discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Next we have 911 Communications.
As the board is aware, at your last meeting-- I apologize. We received direction to bring back at this meeting some additional information as it related to a concept that had been put forward at that meeting with respect to transferring 911 Communications to the sheriff's office from under the county manager. Ms. Lancaster was tasked with that particular analysis. I know that she has had a couple of meetings with law enforcement and has included, that has also included some of our volunteer fire departments. She has had discussions with emergency medical services. I know she has spent time actually in the 911 Center, looking at that. And I'm going to turn it over to her in just a minute, but we do have a recommendation based upon the analysis that has been done to date. So with that, I will turn it over to Michelle and then if you have any questions, either she or I will be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. As Ms. Coto just mentioned, I had several meetings with police chiefs, fire chiefs, conversations, lots of conversation with the sheriff. Actually, following the last board meeting, the sheriff and I spoke the next morning and had a good conversation. And he worked very quickly with his staff to gather all of the police chiefs and several of the fire chiefs together that afternoon. So the next day, we had some chance, we talked for about two hours so that I could hear from them directly, some of the concerns that he mentioned the night that he was here at the board meeting. Additionally, we had a meeting the Friday of that week with only the sheriff's staff and several of the police chiefs to talk just specifically about law enforcement issues that they had concerning the 911 Center. Tonight, what I plan to do is to provide you with the best information that I can so that you can make the best decision that you can about this important issue for the county regarding the 911 Center. And I really just, I only have a few slides, so this is not going to take very long. And then the sheriff is here as well and I know would be happy to take any questions if you have any after the presentation. I wanted to start with just providing some highlights for the board and for those who are watching regarding the current status of 911 Communications. And just, I've laid out for you some of the staffing numbers, looking at our full-time telecommunications, including supervisors, assistant supervisors, and part-time communicators and what the budget is for this service. One of the issues that has definitely come to light as a current status issue is issue with space that was mentioned at the last meeting and particularly the lack of a break room for these particular staff who work 12-hour shifts. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in one of the later slides. And just to give you some aspect of what the call volume is, in 2015, calendar year 2015, we took over 339,000 calls, just slightly more than 339,000 calls in the 911 Center. The center provides dispatch services for the sheriff, 10 police departments, 18 fire departments, EMS, and several after-hours groups, Rape Crisis Center, and several different groups. Our public works folks' calls go there after hours. So they're doing a whole plethora of work that is really important to the community. Additionally, as Ms. Coto mentioned, I did spend some time in the 911 Center last week and I would be remiss, particularly since there are several of them in the audience tonight, to convey to you the fact that we have a great staff, one that you really should be proud of, that run this 911 Center 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the work that they do is really geared toward providing excellent service to the law enforcement and fire services folks that are out doing harms, in harm's way all the time, really making those systems work well and looking out for the residents of Union County at the end of the day, making sure that people are safe and secure in this county. As I started looking at the consolidated call center, I did a little research to see how long we had actually had a consolidated center. This is actually, I would say, something novel. There aren't, there are a lot of consolidated centers, but not the majority of the centers that you see around the country are consolidated where all of the emergency services calls come into one central location. For example, I came from Mecklenburg, we did not operate a consolidated system. The police department had theirs, EMS had theirs, and there are several, in a lot of places, that's how the model works. So in 2003, there was the foresight to merge all the 911, to merge the 911 centers, particularly Monroe City Police and Fire with the county. And this was, from what I can tell from reading in the minutes, it was intended to seek efficiencies and to eliminate any delay in call response due to call transfers with multiple centers. And it was seen as a best practice, so it was seen as really moving forward and looking forward in what was in the best interest of the community at that time. As noted on the agenda abstract, there's nothing that I have identified that can't be resolved or improved under the current structure. I've talked with the sheriff quite a bit, talked to him today, and also some of the key 911 staff, our division director, Larry Brinker, and our operations manager, Sharon Crook. And we have all agreed that this is a sustainable recommendation and that we would hope that we would, that you would give us your support tonight. The recommendation that I'm making is that the sheriff and I partner together, so the county manager's office, with me taking the lead, partner with the sheriff to address the identified issues that we have listed below, particularly addressing physical space needs specifically in the area for breaks, which this is actually underway. I spent some time with facility staff last week. We've already identified a couple of options that we can move forward with rather quickly to allow for that group to have some area that's separate from their workspace, to have break time during their shifts. A review of the law enforcement protocols, which is one of the issues that was raised at your last meeting and has clearly been raised in the conversations that I've had. We are not wedded to the law enforcement protocols and we want to provide to the users what they think is the right service. And so we want to sit down with them and really look through what those protocols should look like and how they should be implemented in our call center. Additionally, one of the issues that has come up is there is a steering committee that was designed to operate as an advisory group of users for the 911 Center. For several reasons, that committee has not really met very often and has not met in most recent months. So we want to reconstitute that steering committee before the end of this month and really get that group back in sync with what are the things that they want to see from the center, open those lines of communication so that we know that we're doing the work that they want us to do, which is really one of the sole reasons that the 911 Center is there for that, for those user groups. So we really want to get that group moving. Another thing that I didn't list here, but the sheriff and I were talking right before the meeting and we talked about adding, we also want to initiate discussion with the fire departments regarding their protocols, even though that has not been one of the issues that has been brought to me as, to the forefront as the others. Since we're starting that conversation with law enforcement, we want to start that same conversation with the fire departments and make sure that we are following the protocols that they think are important and that we're asking the right questions so that they're getting the right results that they would, that they would like to see. We would anticipate providing monthly updates to the Board of County Commissioners. I've talked to several of you today and a few of you in the last week regarding this issue and I know that that's something that's important to you. And then I know that there will be additional ideas and suggestions and issues that arise and we want to be able to react to those. So as we identify those, we will bring those to your attention if it's necessary and also begin work to address those as we move forward. And then no later than October 3rd, which would be about 90 days from now, is the first meeting in October, we would bring to you kind of a total summary of all the activities that have taken place and any things that we've identified that are yet to take place so that you can see that the progress we've made and hopefully be as confident as we are that this is the right structure for this community and the right thing to do for the county is keeping 911 where it is, under the authority of the county manager and that we can all move forward doing what we know is the right thing for the community. And I'm happy to take any questions this time.
Any questions?
Michelle, I appreciate your work and we've had numerous conversations.
Yes, we have.
And you asked me if you could fix it where it is, would that be okay? And what I told you is that as long as we resolve the concerns, and you have to understand, I got, the reason I brought this up is I got the customers of 911 complaining that it wasn't being handled as efficiently as it could. One statement was made, if we don't make changes, we're going to lose a fireman or a deputy. That's unacceptable. So we've got to do something to improve procedures and our perception as well, because that's important as well. And I told you I'd support this with your commitment that if, October 3rd, if it's not, then we'll look at going to the other. The only other thing I would ask is when you, your steering committee or when you're talking to the firemen, talk to EMS as well, because there's uniqueness in every one of them.
Yes. And I've talked to Brian and they absolutely will be included in all of our conversations going forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sheriff, you okay? How many 911 employees we got here? Raise your hand. Y'all okay? All right. And this is how this works. We hear concerns, we talk about it. Nobody's flying off the handle up here. We're going to look at this. Nobody's blaming the employees of 911. This is just a situation that we've got to fix. If there is a perceived problem or a real problem, the sheriff at all times has been very complimentary of the employees of 911 and just concerned with maybe some of the training that we're not providing for you. This is not anything in reflection to the job that you're doing. This is in reflection to maybe the extra training that we need to have you receive. Everybody clear with that? All right. So anybody want to make a motion on this? Just want to receive the information?
Yes.
That's all you need to do there. If there's no other action to be taken at this point in time.
Michelle, thank you for what you do.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 25 in new business, discussion of the 2016 General Obligation Bond Referendum. Okay, item number 25 in new business, discussion of the 2016 general obligation bond referendum.
Yes, and commissioners, as you are aware, we had two meetings today, one at 4:00 PM with South Piedmont Community College, in which they made a request of you with respect to a 2016 bond referendum, as well as at 5:30 from Union County Public Schools on a 2016 bond referen- referendum. At this point in time, Jeff Yates has a very brief presentation that we just want to go over as it relates to impacts on any kind of a bond issue as it relates to potentially tax rate. What we then are prepared to do is take your direction. We have Scott Leo with us this evening, who is our bond counsel. We may have to take a break, depending on what direction we get from you, so that we can draft the appropriate language that will need to go in the resolution, which will ultimately would end up on a bond referendum. So with that, if, with your permission, I will turn it over to Jeff, who has just a couple of slides, and then we look to you to provide us with the direction.
What you had in front of you, or what you should have had at your seat when you turned the dais, was a copy of this presentation. And there are copies, they were handed out for the audience. If you didn't get a copy or if you want to see this at home, we'll put all this on our website, along with the documents that we provided to you in anticipation of tonight's earlier meetings. So without too much delay, I just want to kind of briefly talk about, so general, the general obligation bonds as a concept, what you told us in the recent past concerning your debt policy and direction, review of the debt impact. We put together the best we could some impact analysis on tax rate for the different options you have. Then review of the question language, and then we're going to send you a message, we're going to ask for some question, for direction from you. We have Scott Leo with Parker Poe in the back with some of my staff, so we can prepare the resolutions as necessary based on your direction tonight. As you know, we're kind of under a time constraint, we have about a week to work this out. We can also take tonight's direction and move forward. So with that in mind, general obligation bonds, essentially what, when we talk about general obligation bonds, what we're referring to is the full faith and credit of the county. What, these are no different than really any other instrument of debt, with the exception that you're pledging your taxing authority behind them. COPS, two-thirds bonds, all those other things are just debt instruments. They still all have payments to go with them, and these are the best. Our general obligation bonds are, what we used to refer to as gold-plated, meaning that this is the lowest-cost debt instrument you have, because it's your AAA rating, it's your highest credit worthiness you have. Everything else is going to trade off of this with some additional costs related to it. Projects, when you talk about general obligation bonds, they must be the question on the ballot, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, but when you go out to ask, you can specify the ballot language. The asset life matching, one of the things that Mrs. Boyd talked about earlier tonight was the 20, 20 years of debt for a project. It should really add 20 years of life to whatever you're doing with it. I know some of the things we saw in the debt proposal from, or the referendum proposal from the schools, some of that, some of those projects may or may not be 20-year assets. And it's equivalent of taking out essentially a mortgage to fund something like a car, a 20-year note on a 10-year asset or a five-year asset. So we want to be real mindful of that. Limited FFNA, meaning finishing fixtures, those things can be funded as part of a new facility. So if you're building, for instance, a library or the technology center, the lab equipment, all of the different things that go into that to get it ready to open, can be part of that cost. But if you're doing a renovation, you really want to stick tightly to the brick and mortar, the things, if you turn the building upside down, it don't fall out. So that's kind of a difference, and you have to analyze each and every one of the projects individually. And the LGC will do that going forward as we kind of put this bond package together. What you're also looking into is sustainability of a project. And sustainability kind of means two things, the ability to fund the ongoing debt service, but also the sustainability of the operations of the project. You heard Dr. McGee talk a little bit about what the estimated impact of operating the new facilities for SPC, SPCC would be. You heard Mrs. Boyd talk about the impact of the new facilities, you know, there's, in their estimation, there's efficiency to be gained from trading mobile classrooms, from brick and mortar classrooms, those kinds of things. So when you're looking at and considering bond projects, opening a new facility, for instance, has an operational impact. There's staffing, there's ongoing maintenance, there's eventual replacement even in some cases. So those are things to be considered. The debt reserve to level load tax impact, one of the things I'll show you in just a second when we have the amortization that we've put together on the proposed referendums, what we've done is tried to level load the debt, if you will. So we start the debt a year, or start the tax rate a year early, but that allows us to take the peak year off of the debt impact. In North Carolina, when you do general obligation bonds, not the case of revenue bonds, but the general obligation bonds, your first year of debt service is your highest year of debt service, with the goal of 50% of your principal being paid off within 10 years. So you're the highest you're going to be in year one. What we've tried to do is structure what we refer to as a debt reserve to level out those first few years so that your peak year isn't as bad as it could be. And you'll see that in application in a moment. You have some debt limits, 8% of your assessed valuation, which is a general statute requirement. We're not anywhere near that, so that's not really one we're worried about. 50%, your debt policy says 15% of the general fund operating budget. Now, we've interpreted that to mean like your reserve policy, that it's all the operating funds that are general funds. So the schools fund, the fire fund, and the EMS fund, as well as the general fund are included altogether in that. In 2017, the projection's about 16%. You've been as high as 23% to 25%. If you were to take out all the debt that's being proposed, you would be back to 23% to 25% in total. And then again, in your existing policy, and I'll refer to that language in a second, but, I'm sorry, in the presentation from last spring, the direction the board gave us was that all new debt excluding revenue bonds should be voted on. If you remember back, we had a discussion about using COPS, limited obligation bonds, and two-thirds bonds. But as, as the discussion evolved during the work session, pretty much the consensus of the board at that time was that we not take out any of the, any new debt that's not referendum-backed, or that's not revenue-backed without a referendum in place. Your current policy, which was adopted as part of your capital improvement program management policy in November of 2012, is anticipated that the new general obligation debt will come with its own tax rate, meaning that if the voters approve the debt, then they've also kind of given approval at that same time for the tax rate to support the debt. So instead of dipping into operations or dipping into somewhere else in the budget to try to cover that, they go hand in hand. So that's your existing policy in place at this point. So with that in mind, the debt impact or the tax rate impact of what, what's been discussed, looking at the full request for Union County Public Schools, we've done our best to massage the tax rate using the debt reserve concept. As you can see, the debt reserve all the way over to the right column. We set a minimum of $1 million in there, and that's a portion of the total. But at that level, assuming some interest rate, about 5% on the interest rate 20-year life, you're looking at a peak year or your first years of that tax rate being about seven cents to be able to fund the entire UCPS request. And you can see it's about $229 million. That includes three-quarters of a percent cost of issuance that has to be included into that. And once you back out Benton Heights, that number comes to about $229,200. And over that life, you're looking at paying the interest of about $120.3 million. If you were to look at the SBCC projects solely as envisioned or proposed, you're looking, same concept, where we try to smooth the rate out a little bit, about $1.25 million. Both of these, we've tried to time the issuance just a little bit where we knew the construction schedule. So these two both include two issuances, not just one. So you, first one and then a second. So you're looking at about $39.8 million, which again includes the cost of issuance, and then about $28.9 million in total interest cost, with that one and a quarter cents tax to cover that going on over time. If you were to do all of these things together, your new, your new tax rate for debt would be about eight and a quarter cent based on the projects as requested excluding Benton Heights from UCPS and SBCC as requested. The question, the way the question has to be formed is X amount of bonds to pay for the costs, or pay the costs of blank. So you fill in the two blanks, and that's the question as it appears in the ballot. The question can be as general as you'd like it to be, or as specific as you would like it to be, but the question specifies the project. So for instance, if you're really specific in the project, and we set a library, we have to deliver a library, you wouldn't be allowed to use that money to build a park. Okay, so that's one of the questions we have for you, is what, what level of specificity do you want the question to be? So with that, I wanted to be real brief, because I know we've already been meeting since four o'clock. I'll take any direction you have to give us. Also have, based on the request earlier this evening, some paperwork to give you related to SBCC. So we'll be happy to provide that as well.
Well, this is being passed out. We, and we concluded quickly our meeting with the Union County Public Schools, and I feel like there's probably need, needs to be a little bit more time to digest what we heard from them. So I would make a motion that we would have a special meeting Friday morning at 8:00 AM to address Union County Public Schools, and that'll give us a little bit more time to go over the information there. Any discussion on that motion?
I would ask that you, you add a discussion potentially on the fire response that we get back from Thursday night.
Can we get an update? Can we get an update at that time on what happens with fire?
We should be able to.
Okay, all right, that's a good idea. Any other discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, none? Now with SBCC, any comments or, we heard from SBCC tonight, any comments or motions on SBCC?
Just a question on the, the language for Piedmont Community College and the acquisition of land right-ofways. Do we include that funding for library or partnership with the library?
Are you referring to what's, what's provided in front of you is necessary resolutions? And what this does provides $50 million for Union, Community College Bond Referendum, which based on estimates, initial estimates, should be sufficient to cover the additional library space which you asked for. The question's general enough to allow that as a joint-use facility with the community college. This, I don't believe this would authorize you to do a standalone library, but this would be something you could do in partnership with them, because the 50 million would be, need to be used for community college facilities.
Do we, do we need to actually put that in, that, is this the language that would be on the ballot on the first page?
The language that would be on the ballot, if you flip to the third page, the language would be 50,000, $50 million of bonds to pay the cost of providing for the construction, renovation, improvement, equipping, and furnishing of facilities for South Piedmont Community College and the acquisition of lands or rights of way if necessary. So that would be kind of all-encompassing. This is a very, it's a broad question that kind of allows us to do all the things in conversation with our bond counsel, all the things we talked about, that you talked about at your prior meeting, to be able to accomplish that.
I would like to see it, just at least in the language included, the, the library piece. So that it doesn't just say the Piedmont Community College and acquisition of land, but also Western Union County Library.
So we, could it be, could it say something about a?
Partnership.
Let's see, what was the language they used? Satellite campus?
I think the more specific you make the question, the less flexibility you will have to be able to achieve what you're aiming at. I think this, this specific question allows you to do what you're asking to do, what you're wanting to do. I think that's part of the education process for the public to know that that is part of the proposed bond package. If you put library in here, then you, you're going to be boxed into doing that specific, or if you break it out as a separate question, then you'll be limited on the dollar value and how you do that. So you, you can accomplish what you're aiming at with this question. I would encourage you, if that's the goal, and you're, and we're still kind of working through this concept of a joint-use facility and everything, that more flexibility is better to try to resolve some of these issues going forward.
But I'm okay with the 50 million, but I would like to see a joint-use facility, something to be effective. So that people are going in there, know what they're getting, that it's not just SBCC, but it's a joint-use facility in partnership with the library.
And I, I understand your, your position. The only concern that I would have is that, having done this in one other location in my, my last job, is we did do an analysis, took us about nine months to say, would a, they were building a new facility with a library, could we in fact partner? In that particular situation, it did not work out to where their mission versus the county's mission on library services were very different, that it ended up not being feasible at that point in time. So my only concern is by you identifying a joint-use facility, and certainly if that's what the board directs us to do, that's what we will do, is that, that then ties you exactly to that. And if you study it and we come up with a different answer, I think you are then restricted to having to do only that.
Where, where is the, I'm back on their presentation to us.
So if it didn't, if a partnership did not work out, would the funds still be available for?
If the partnership didn't work out, probably what would end up happening is, just because of, you do the 50 million, let's just follow it through its logical train. You do the 50 million, it passes, you go out to do the project, we can't work out a joint-use facility, we can't work out the agreements and everything. What we would do is you, you as a board still have to appropriate that money to the community college. So you would appropriate them their $39.9 million request, that $10 million that you had added, or the additional for the library, would just go unused from a bond authorization perspective. And if, then if 2016, if you wanted to put a new library on the ballot separately, you, that's what you would do to go forward. It would just be authorization, unused authorization, because it didn't, the, what you authorized didn't come to fruition. You can get it authorized, you can vote on it, but you as a board still have to come back appropriated and issue it. And there's decision points all along that way that will allow you to put the brakes or to say, you know, pare it back. So if we came back and said the project, even as a joint concept, was 46 million, then you don't have to issue 50 million, this is authorization of up to, really. It's not authorization that you have to go out and do. What you're really looking at is what you're delivering and authorization up to that amount for what you're delivering.
I, I think if you, this page that they have proposed overview, they're asking for STEM building on the OCH campus, completion of the CTHE renovation, renovation of building A, renovation of building B, and the classroom slash library building in Western Union County. I would think that, that we put all those items in there. Any, that's what they're being used for, that's what they're requesting them for, and up to $50 million for those projects.
The more specific you make the ballot language, the more locked in you are to deliver exactly what the ballot language specified.
Right.
So the, when we have the language you have in front of you that allows the ability to maneuver within that, those projects, you can still achieve them, but if you lock, if the more specific you make it, you're locking yourself down to that.
What I hear is that we can also move away from anything and not commit to those things. And that's, I'm hearing that too. So, yeah, yeah, it locks us down, but that's what they're asking us to do. This is, they're not asking us to build a parking lot, they're not asking, you know, they're, they're asking us for renovations, completions of projects, and the STEM building, and the classroom library in Western Union County. That's what they're asking for. So you're saying if we don't, they can add on another project that we could use the 50 million for?
If they decide, let's say they, they wanted to build the STEM building, they couldn't find a place down in Waxhaw to do it. And they wanted to do, okay, instead of another classroom building on their, the old Charlotte Highway location, I think you may, if you get really specific and you say where it's supposed to be at in all the language they put in there, you're going to be locked into doing that. If the 50 million would have to be spent on community college projects, you as a board have the ability then to come back once that's approved, if it's approved, and appropriate that funding. So you'll make that decision, up to the amount that's authorized by the voters.
So if we said satellite location with library and didn't specify where it went, like Western Union County, Eastern Union County, Southern, Northern, that would work? I think there's a desire to make sure that the library is included.
I'm looking at Scott Leo in the, in the audience. You have a?
Mr. Chairman, some of this discussion could be appropriate for closed session under attorney-client privilege. If Mr. Leo would like to address the board, I defer to him as well.
I just, one point and one question. I think Jeff, what you said was that much of the specifics of what the bond is going to amount to and be used for
to amount to and be used for is in the marketing and the education coming up to the bond vote. So we'll, if, if the library is a potential multipurpose type use, that can be done in the education, correct?
Correct.
So we want to keep it as open-ended as possible. The other question I would ask is, what is the current status with the library master plan? Do we know where we are with regard to a Western Union County library, the cost, the size, where are we there?
The?
Let's take a recess and go into closed session.
I won't be able to answer that question in closed session, but.
Other answering question, first.
We actually, in your capital improvement program, unfunded projects in your budget this year, we identified approximately $7 million for a Western Union County library, and I believe it was somewhere in the magnitude of about 40,000 to 50,000 square feet based upon replicating what we have at City of Monroe. What we did is we took the 2007 study, which was the last study that was done, and the numbers that were contained, construction numbers that were contained within that study, and then we added monies for inflation, since there had been almost, you know, 11, 10 years since that study was done. So we did, in fact, it's, it's still an estimate because of the fact that we have not gone back out and studied that issue in any great detail since about the 2007, 2008 timeframe.
And does that include the cost to equip it and staff it?
It would include, I believe, your furniture fixture and equipment, as I recall. It did not include land acquisition, which may not be an issue if you partner with SPCC. It did not include your operational cost.
Would you like to go into closed session and ask any questions that we need to? Feel like we need to?
I defer to the board, I was not about to do that.
Okay. Need a motion to go into closed session to, you got some language you want to give to me for that?
Yes, sir, it's pursuant to 143, 318.1183.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Be, take about 15 minutes.